The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Alderman Troop. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Triplet. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Honowitz. Alderman Wessels. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Cruzen. President Reed. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Triplet. Alderman Ortman. Alderwoman Florida. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman French. Alderman Williamson. Alderman Carter. Alderwoman Cruzen. Twenty-one present.
Quarant being present, I'll ask everyone in the chambers and the galleries who's able to stand to please rise for prayer. Lord, we give all thanks and praise to you. As we begin this day, we give a special thanks for last night's 11th inning comeback win by our St. Louis Cardinals. We, with great humility, we ask, please, don't make us wait again till the 11th inning. We're made of strong stuff, and we would like to do tonight's win in nine innings. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen. Spend our regular order of business, take about courtesy resolution calendar, I move for adoption of our courtesy resolution calendar, and entertain a second on that motion. Second invite Alderman from the 20th. Alderwoman from the 16th, would you like to approach Dyes?
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the Board. I'm very honored to be the sponsor this morning for a special resolution that's for Club Lafayette. We've had them here before. Today, it's extra special for me. My constituent, Claire Rainford, goes to Narix Hall, and she is part of this program. And they're gonna go ahead, and they're going to read the resolution for us in French. And then, for those of you who don't speak French, they will say it in English.
Voici venu le temps où Saint Louis s'est la bienvenue aux élèves de l'institution Notre-Dame et à leurs professeurs, Mesdames Dupuis, Depern, et merci ainsi que Monsieur Leera. Voici venu le temps où Saint Louis remercie les élèves de l'institution Notre-Dame, leurs parents et leurs professeurs pour le chaleureux accueil qu'ils ont réservé en juin dernier aux jeunes américains de Nerangues, Old Sheminat Preparatory High School and St. Louis University High School, ainsi qu'à leurs professeurs, Mesdames Nuschem, Gruetchella, and Cresspin. Voici venu le temps où la ville de Saint Louis retrouve ses racines françaises. La France a toujours été associée à l'histoire américaine, général Lafayette qui a participé à l'indépendance aux côtés de George Washington, en passant par des explorateurs français comme le Père Marquet, Louis Juliette, ou Robert de la Salle. Les fondateurs de la ville de Saint Louis étaient français, nous ne l'oublions pas. Pierre Laclede et René Choutot, celui-là-même qui bâtissaient la ville en l'honneur de Louis XIV, sous le saint patronage de Louis IX, Saint Louis justement. Voici venu le moment de rappeler que notre propre hôtel de ville, ici même, a une architecture directement inspirée de celle de l'Hôtel de Ville de Paris, ainsi que des splanteurs du Château de Chambeaux. Voici encore venu le moment d'évoquer tous les enrichissements que des projets comme ceux de nos écoles apportent à tous, des deux côtés de l'Atlantique. Rapprochement, amitié, partage, lien tenu entre nos deux pays, nos deux peuples, nos deux cultures, comme une grande arche entre nos deux continents. Ainsi, au nom des citoyens de Saint Louis, le conseil et Monsieur le maire sont heureux de vous accueillir dans leur mur, et vous souhaite à tous un agréable séjour sur les bords de Mississippi.
St. Louis wishes to welcome the Club Lafayette and their teachers, Madame Christine Dupuis Schlemmer, Madame Odile Depern, Madame Angelique Mercier, and Monsieur Demain, Damien Leera, from Notre Dame High School in Château de France. And whereas, St. Louis wishes to extend its appreciation for the generous hospitality extended to the Louiseettes from Narix Hall, Chaminade Preparatory High School, and St. Louis University High School, and their teachers, Madame Laura Nuschem, Miss Carmen Gruetella, and Madame Jennifer Cresspin, during their visit to Château de France this past June. And whereas, St. Louis proudly acknowledges both its French heritage and the contributions of the many French individuals in the development of the great city of St. Louis, from General Lafayette, who served under George Washington in the Revolutionary War, to the explorers of the mighty Mississippi River, Father Jack Marquette, Louis Juliette, and Robert de La Selle. Our founders, Pierre Laclede and his partner Rene Auguste Chateau, picked the site for the city, and in 1764, named it for St. Louis, named it St. Louis for King Louis IX, the patron saint of King Louis XV of France. And whereas, our own city hall was inspired by the Hôtel de Ville in Paris and the Château de Chambeaux on the Loire River in France. And whereas, this exchange program has enriched both the Club Lafayette and the Louiseettes' education and deepened their mutual understanding of cultural diversity and similarities, and has been a great source of joy to all. Thank you, Claire and Mary Ellen. You did a fantastic job, and the city of St. Louis is obviously very French-inspired, and we appreciate you all coming and doing that for us today.
And I don't know if you called the last name, but... Cut back up. What was your last name again? Rainford, right? This is Jeff's daughter. Jeff's daughter. That was beautiful, wasn't it? Give her another round of applause. Alderwoman from the 2nd, like approached Dyes.
Good morning. I wish we could read this resolution so you can really understand all the accomplishments of who we are honoring today. A wonderful department like St. Louis TV 10, it's their 20th anniversary today. And I've been here 12 years, and I know you've seen many of the people that are behind the cameras being honored today in a silent way, but the things that they have done for our community for the last 20 years in bringing us programming, giving us government transparency, covering things in our ward, establishing the first Spanish and Bosnian channels so that all our community has something to look at on STL TV. It has changed to many, many names, Channel 10, City TV 10, but we're strong on St. Louis TV 10 today. I mean, I'm sorry. STL TV today. This is live television, what can I say? I was up late watching the Cardinals. But we have a very special treat this morning. We actually have a video, and I don't know if this has ever happened with a resolution. They have to work and be honored at the same time, and they have presented a video for us to watch. Short video in celebration of the 20th anniversary.
That's a well-known secret, that we have the kind of resource, the communications division and STL TV have.
Having a trained group of professionals that can produce information and documentaries and string this information together in a video little, I think is extremely helpful.
A station like STL TV plays an important part in a little of the positive field of a city.
I think it's really important for the city to have its own television station.
You're watching STL TV.
Experience St. Louis.
Hey, what's up, y'all? It's Saturday, and you're watching the new STL TV. That's right, what?
I think our work is still yet to be accomplished. I think we still have more opportunity ahead of us, and we'll continue to forge forward challenges, doing our best we can to promote the city of St. Louis and to be good at that base or something happy for the city of St. Louis.
Everyone is so professional and so knowledgeable about their job and so positive about bringing this information to St. Louis.
When they come out to the junior football league, particular football game, the level of professionalism they bring to these games is unfounded.
There are a lot of things that go on in this community that the average citizen is exposed to every day, and STL TV provides that information.
I think by talking about and featuring different aspects of St. Louis, it makes us all proud of St. Louis. So I think it's an important community, plus in that regard.
It almost sounded to me that so many people I knew were actually watching.
If you took away this sort of marketing tool and this sort of advertising for the citizens of St. Louis, it would be a disservice to those who live in this city, wouldn't that have died, couldn't be the day to say, "We leave the house of mourning." Today, what I produce, which is not, not what I'm watching.
Okay, how was that? As you see, they have covered plenty of things, plenty of celebrities, plenty of events, and lots of moments. I have many copies of tapes of things that have happened here in the Board of Aldermen and events in my ward, and I tell you, the hairdos that I look at in there, we have all grown down here. We've seen the members of the crew give birth, get married, have happy events as well. I think it's enjoyable to stand around one of the crew people one time and listen to what they're actually saying on the microphones, and sometimes laughing at some of the silly things that we do. But I think one of the, one thing I'd like to say is, the communications division was established by the Board of Aldermen under President Tom Villa. So he's come back. And the creation of government access known as STL TV today. You see some of your favorite shows in your ward, City Corner, Best of STL, in your It's Your Money. I've even saw a video before I came in here covering my bait and taste. It's most enjoyable when the crew come out and interview, and the people get to actually be interviewed and be on TV and see themselves as well. Now, they are 24/7 access, and they've done over 10,000 new programs, and we just appreciate them. They've gotten many awards, the Emmy Award of a dozen, National Telly Award, many Merrill and state and federal proclamations. And this is just something that's not handed to them in a packet. It's their personalities, their character that they bring to life, and it's a lot of fun to go over and visit them on Oakland. So I'd like to recognize our director, Kurt Scobie, which is here. He is over the utilities. And as Chairwoman of the Public Utility Committee, it is my honor to give this resolution in recognition and celebration of the 20th year anniversary of STL TV. And at this time, Donna Brooks would like to speak, and Andre is here as well, is a constituent of my ward. And Marlene Davis, I'm not gonna forget that, 'cause she has some very nice things over here to give. So... You wanna go first, Marlene? Okay, Marlene.
Thank you. As most of you all know, I have a lot of history with the city, and even though we have some very senior alderpersons, I think I was on the scene before both of them as well. So I'm dating myself. But I have to share with you, if you really don't understand the importance of this endeavor on behalf of the city of St. Louis. If you were running a billion-dollar corporation and you needed to spend money on marketing, there is no way you could get the bang for the buck that we get for the small budget line item that we have for you. So I have to say thank you. I have to say thank you many, many times. And in what I know about understanding this access, not only does it give you, give your constituencies an opportunity to see the whole city and see what you do and what everyone else is doing, but it also gives those visitors who come in. That's the first thing I do when I go to another city. I turn the TV on to the access station, 'cause I wanna know what that city is about. And that's what they do for us. It is wonderful. They make you probably look better than you look most days in front of most people, and it's a great thing. And I also wanna thank you, Donna and Andre, because Andre knows, he was a pup when I first met him. He was just trying to figure it all out. And look at him now. But I wanna thank you because you helped me revive the TV station at St. Louis Public Schools. It was sitting over there dormant, and now look what they're doing. So I wanna thank you again for that. And I just wanted to do something real simple here. And I just wanted to give a toast to TV 10. All right?
Well, on behalf of the Communications Division, all of our staff, our volunteers, our interns, we are just so grateful to have this opportunity to come before you and to share with you the 20th anniversary of the Communications Division. One of the things that you may not know is, 20 years ago, the first show that we produced was called Trees and You for the Forestry Division. And since then, as the video showed, we've certainly made it an effort to make sure that we've had a very diverse programming schedule, have covered just about everything that you can think of in the city of St. Louis, from sporting events to things that are going on in our neighborhood, to really tough issues that pull at your heartstrings. And I think that is what, as a government access channel, we should be doing, and we should be making sure that all of the public has an opportunity to be engaged in the political process here of understanding how government works, how we're working for them, what we're doing for them, and what resources are available to them. So, in short, just very appreciative of this opportunity, and we thank you again for allowing us to be here and supporting us, and we certainly, again, thank our alderperson and everyone here that has supported STL TV over the years. We thank you so much. I think Andre's gonna say a few words, too.
Wow, it feels funny being on the other side of this. Not being back there directing and being on this side. But as Donna stated, we are really overwhelmed and just thankful for this opportunity. You know, it feels good to be loved. And, you know, I told my staff, this is a great opportunity, a great day for us, and I'm truly appreciative, where all of us are. And it just makes me feel good to think about how far we've come. You know, my first year of being here, I still remember the first Board of Aldermen meeting where I interviewed Mary Ross and Tom Villa, who was the president at that time, for the very first meeting. And I think about how the station has grown in that time that we've gone through, and it just really makes me feel good. I actually have grown up at the station, right after college, and, you know, when Shaima was the mayor, and all the way till today. And so it's been truly an experience for me, but I will tell you that we would not be here if we didn't have the commitment of the staff that we have. I will tell you that most of the times, government channels can't recruit the type of people that we've been able to recruit. We have guys, Louis Mille, standing over there. He directed at the Cardinals baseball game last night. But he's also worked for me and worked for STL TV for over 15 years. Those are the types of people that we like to bring in, people who are committed to St. Louis, who feel like this is where they wanna be because they wanna make a difference. And that's what I think my staff has done. They've worked hard, tirelessly, hours after hours, to make sure that they can make a difference in this city. And I'm just truly thankful for all the partnerships that we've been able to build. I'd like to thank Ollie Stewart for earning her family and friends coming down to celebrate us as well. But I, and I hope that's a reflection of what we've tried to do. You know, we've covered youth from ages of six and seven all the way to, you know, the seniors. We've always tried to make sure that our programming was very diverse, just like our staff, from top to bottom. And I appreciate the fact that we try to do what is best for this city, and that means covering every neighborhood, every community, every Alderman. I get phone calls and somebody say, "Hey, we need you tomorrow." I make the phone call to Tracy, and Tracy says, "Let's make it happen." Like Sam Moore, who likes to call, oh... Call me hour before the event. But I'm truly appreciative, because that just shows me how the residents in your communities, they look for STL TV. They look for us and wonder if we're coming out to cover that event. And so today is just, really just a celebration of St. Louis as a whole, because that's what we wanna do. We wanna make sure that we cover this city and we provide the best positive promotion that we can of this city. So, you know, today, I'm just thankful, and I just wanna thank the Alderwoman, my Alderwoman as well, and Marlene Davis, and all the members of the Board of Aldermen, President Louis Reed for your support. We appreciate it, and like I said, we are just beginning. We wanna continue to be here to celebrate the 25th anniversary. Thank you very much.
Also wanna just thank City TV 10, even though it's not really City TV 10 anymore, it's STL TV, for their many years of service. You know, one of the challenges in St. Louis is being able to get positive press for our city. This station here is dedicated to nothing but positive press for our city. When you take a look at our school systems, and you say, "Why don't they talk about the positive things in our schools?" Because guess what? It's not newsworthy. They're not gonna talk about metro, they wanna talk about the failing ones, they wanna talk about the crime-ridden neighborhoods and those types of things. But there's good things happening in our city also, and that's what's being covered here at STL TV, and they're doing a phenomenal job of it, and they're doing it on a very limited budget. And I can't thank them enough for what they do. Let's give them one more round of applause. And Alderwoman from the 2nd said that they're having their reception in room 208?
Yes.
Room 208, directly following the board meeting. Any further comments? Any further comments? Alderman from the 2nd?
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the Board. Wanna say to STL TV, we appreciate you promoting the 4th ward for the last five years. I have every tape for five years that you promoted, the 4th ward. And any of those in the room and my colleagues that would like to have their ward promoted, just do some projects and they will come out and promote your ward. And I wanna say that I was not on that video. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Any further comments? Alderman from the 22nd?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to say congratulations to STL TV. They do do a phenomenal job at promoting the city of St. Louis. I just have one comment about Mr. Andre Holdman. I was watching this video, and I had an opportunity and the pleasure to attend his 40th year birthday. They had an awesome video when he first started. He was a little kid, basically. He was probably 40 pounds lighter, and he was doing this aerobics class out at Forest Park. And if you can ever get an opportunity to get a clip of that, I'm telling you, it's priceless. You guys do a phenomenal job. I would just like you to take my calls more often, Andre. Really appreciate that. I know you're real busy. I'm trying not to go to Donna. I'm trying to keep it on your level. But again, it's always fun to interact with STL TV, and as Andre said, the whole staff is phenomenal. The entire staff is phenomenal. I mean, you have news anchors, they didn't mention it, that have come over to STL TV, you know, to kinda help enrich the programs and products that they produce. So again, congratulations. It's always a pleasure to interact with you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 22nd?
Mr. President, members of the Board, good morning. Media is very difficult today. It's changing dramatically, quickly, and you guys are trying to keep up with that. They do a phenomenal job. They've received many awards, and obviously, it's difficult for them to pat themselves on the back, and we're trying to do that for them today. I do know, and I don't remember the name, 'cause I didn't commit it to memory, but there's some legislation at the national level that's very important, because some of the providers of our cable and other provision of media are making it more difficult for our residents and others to view this great information about their fair city. And so if there's an opportunity, please contact them, or if they can let us know some more about that, because we really need to make sure when this great programming happens that people have access to it. It's very difficult. You have to pay for a box, you have to go through a three-digit number and all the rest of it. So much of what we're seeing today, many cannot actually see, and that's really, really difficult for us to handle. There are terrific things, and we all know that, because we deal with it every day, but residents and others outside of the city also need to share in the fact that there's more that happens here other than the yellow tape that they see on the, you know, the 4, 6, and 10 news at night. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 22nd?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess I was able to see me in that clip there, so I wanna thank you, Andre. And I've known he and his family for, what, 40 years, 30, 30-some years? And, you know, what I love about STL TV 10, and I continue to call it 10, is because you guys come out when the mainstream media won't come out. So you guys are able to show the constituents in the, in my ward, as well as throughout the city, that there are a lot of activities going on in our communities. Now... Now, if you relied on mainstream media, they would never come out to show that. So, it gives our community as well as the elected official opportunity to kind of, you know, put their stuff on some sort of pedestal and say, hey, this is what we're doing and this is what we're not doing. And I am one of those aldermen who, who will call Andre at the last minute and I threaten him because his family live in my community and I block one end of the street out. I told him, who wasn't coming in? I was blocking the other end off. Didn't have to walk out and trap their cars, but they do a phenomenal job. And you guys keep up the good work. Thank you.
Anything further? Anything further? Alderman from the 18th?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I too would like to congratulate STLTV on that, the name has changed, so, on the, on the fine job that you do. I had the opportunity to be the sponsor of the renewal of the cable bill and we made sure that you stayed in that, in that loop. We, in fact, were able to get some additional dollars to buy more equipment that was necessary. I also had the opportunity to be in Washington DC as a student and listened in to some of the conversations at the FCC when cable was considered the latest cutting-edge technology. And the whole idea was that many municipalities at that time were thinking that they could get the opportunity to have some kind of way to have direct communications through TV with their constituents. I mean, they even talked about at that time that you could have in your house a box where you could push the button and send your message immediately back to government. Well, that part of the technology didn't develop and it certainly hasn't been implemented, but at least we have a, a station that can view and, and gives programming that you ordinarily do not see in the main media. You cover events, you cover activities, you cover parts of our community that are not being heard today. And so, that is very important. And still further, you are part of the process of making government transparent. People can actually see what's going on by viewing STLTV. That's very, very important. You do fine work. I am not surprised that you've won so many awards with the talent that you have there. I would be surprised if you didn't, but you did. And so, you're one of the, in my opinion, one of the jewels that we have for the city of St. Louis. Not every city has a television station. Not every city is able, not all citizens in the various cities across the country are able to view their legislative body, hear the various elected officials on a consistent or daily basis in this way. And so, St. Louis, I believe, is lucky with that. Those cities that do have it really treasure it and continue to try to put monies into it to make it even more worthwhile. We thank you for all your good work. Yes, I was not viewed on that. I didn't see myself as well, but I'm not going to threaten to close your street like the alderman from the 27th. But we are happy that we have the resolution in honoring the 20 years of, of cable, of television viewing of the, of the governmental process and giving a way for our citizens to have the transparency necessary to make good government. We thank you for helping us in all of that.
Donna just wanted to let me know, there's a longer version of the video on your desk in the form of a DVD. So, I hope I see myself, too.
Call in all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. That will return to our regular order of business. Introduction of our guests. Any introduction of our guests? Alderman from the 23rd?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Dan Cassada from Vincent Jack Meadows, Demetrius Alfred from the firefighters, and Celeste Reader from the Realtors.
Alderman from 13th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to introduce my special guest, someone that is here for all the meetings. We see him every week, but we don't see him in the, in the jacket that he has on today. That's Dale Russe. That's Dale. Stand up, please.
Nice jacket, Dale. Any further? Alderman from the 3rd?
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to introduce as my special guest, Mr. Ahmaud Alba Baker. Where'd he go? Oh, there he is, over there. I know you've seen on television where in the third ward, we have given away brand-new bicycles to children who otherwise may never own a bicycle, and Ahmaud has been extremely helpful in that behalf.
All right, thank you, Ahmaud. Alderman from the 14th?
I would like to introduce as my special guest, Anthony Alancia from the Associated General Contractors. Thank you.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the 17th?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. Catherine Warner from the, our Sustainability Director for the city is here today. We've introduced a bill, it's got a number 195, and we'll have a hearing on that next Monday, excuse me, next Friday, before the board session. I would encourage everybody to kind of get a little bit familiar with that. Catherine's down here to begin explaining that to people, but it's the type of thing that's intended to save a lot of energy for the residents of the city and it will more than likely begin touching a number of your residents, so the more familiar you are with it, perhaps the better. But she's down here today to answer any questions and we will be having kind of our first hearing on the bill next Friday, so.
All right, thank you. Also have with me today, Roberta Gaddy. Roberta, please, please stand.
Yeah.
Roberta will be doing all kinds of things with us, so give Roberta a round of applause. Thank you for coming today. Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the 10th, have anything to close up with?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. My special guest, Mr. Stephens, is on assignment this morning after a long night at the ballpark last night, so. But it's also National Stuffed Animals Day. He's home taking care of his collection of stuffed animals and getting ready for the game tonight. Thank you.
Getting ready for the game. Alderman from the 13th, he recognizes on approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to approve the minutes of the October 14th meeting.
Move by Alderman 13th, second by Alderman 20th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. Reported city officials?
Reported city officials can be found in sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all aldermen's mailboxes. I have from as honor the mayor, the following correspondence. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the St. Louis Zoological Sub-District Commission Advisory Board. The appointment of Mr. Holmes Lomarol, who resides at 292 North Kings Highway, whose term will expire on December 31st, 2014. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor, City of St. Louis.
Before we did, also have with us a special guest, Ollie May Stewart, the sixth ward committee woman. Ollie, thank you for coming out today and other ladies who joined in. We really appreciate it. Southside Wilderness Center run a great organization.
This is the swim team.
Oh, that's the swim team for the Southside Wilderness. Give them a round of applause. Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the St. Louis Zoological Sub-District Commission Advisory Board?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd like to refer that to the Parks Committee. We'll be, have a meeting next Friday anyway, so we'll take it up there.
Madam Clerk, please sign that bill to the Parks Committee.
So noted. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the Plumbers and Drainlayers Board of Examiners. The appointment of Mr. James E. Cobb, who resides at 3733 St. Louis and whose term will expire on June 15th, 2015. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor, City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the 27th, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Plumbers and Drainlayers Board, Board of Examiners.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we accept the mayor's appointment.
Move by Alderman 27th, I entertain second motion. Second by Alderman 12th, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the St. Louis Public Library Board of Directors. The appointment of Mr. Matt Villa, who resides at 3887 Holly Hills Boulevard and whose term will expire on June 1st, 2014. The appointment of Allison Ferring, who resides at 4545 Lindell Boulevard and whose term will expire on June 1st, 2014. The reappointment of Keith Savage, who resides at 2029 Alfred and whose term will expire on June 1st, 2014. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor, City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the 16th, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the St. Louis Library Board of Directors.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to adopt the appointment to the St. Louis Public Library Board of Directors.
Move by Alderman 16th, second by Alderman 20th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the St. Louis Mental Health Fund Board of Trustees. The appointment of Mr. Kirby Burkholder, who resides at 3915 Humphrey and whose term will expire on December 31st, 2014. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor, City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the 8th, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the St. Louis Mental Health Fund Board of Trustees.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we accept the appointment to the St. Louis Mental Health Fund Board of Trustees, Mr. Kirby Burkholder.
Move by Alderman 8th, second by Alderman 20th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
That's the extent of reported city officials.
Dispense for line items seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our formal calendars? With dispens for line items eight through 10. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill 194, sponsored by Alderman Bosley and ordinance repealing ordinance 69000 pertaining to the issuance of any package liquor licenses for premises within the boundaries of the third ward liquor control district containing emergency clause. Board Bill 195, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance recommended by the Park and Environmental Committee, establishing a clean energy development board, authorizing the mayor to appoint the members of the said clean energy development board. Board Bill 196, sponsored by Alderman Volmer and ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for 5439 Rebert Place containing a severability clause. Board Bill 197, sponsored by Alderman Vicaro and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 6925 Old Leitha containing a severability clause. Board Bill 198, sponsored by Alderman Triplett and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2710 Russell containing a severability clause. Board Bill 199, sponsored by Alderman Conway and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing the mayor to apply for funding under the US, United States Housing and Urban Development Office of Healthy Homes and Lead Hazard Control Program for fiscal year 2011 containing sever, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 200, sponsored by Alderman Troop and ordinance pertaining to the renaming of neighborhood, changing the name of neighborhood recognized as the Mark Twain Neighborhood to the Wayne Walker Neighborhood. Board Bill 201, sponsored by Alderman Carter and ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Public Safety on behalf of the mayor to enter into an executive grant agreement with the US Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance to fund the 2011 Justice Assistance Grant Program and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 202, sponsored by Alderman Young and ordinance affirming adoption of a redevelopment plan, a redevelopment area and a redevelopment project, authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement between the city and MX Tiff Incorporated containing a severability clause. Board Bill 203, sponsored by Alderman Young and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the issuance and delivery of not to exceed $8,500,000 plus issuance cost maximum principal amount of tax increment revenue notes for 600 Washington RPA dash one St. Louis component. That's the extent of our first readings.
Reference to committee.
To the Public Safety Committee, Board Bills 194 and 201, to the Health Committee, Board Bill 199, to the Housing Committee, Board Bills 197, 202, 203, and 200, to the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bills 196 and 198, and to the Parks Committee, Board Bill 195. That's the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bill was reported out of the Parks Committee. Board Bill 189, sponsored by all the women and all the men. Alderman Cruzon, President Reed, Alderman Rhodey, Vicaro, Moore, Bosley, Carter, Conway, Young, Honowitz, Florida, Behringer, Schmidt, French, Boyd, Cone, Williamson, Ogilvy, Troop, Flowers, Davis, and Carter. An ordinance relating to Forest Park, recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment and the Board of Public Service, providing for the execution and delivery of 2011 Supplemental Maintenance Corporation Agreement between the city and Forest Park forever with an emergency provision. Board Bill 190, reported out of the Ways and Means Committee, sponsored by Alderman and Alderwomen. Alderman Rhodey, President Reed, Alderwoman Cruzon, Alderman Vicaro, Moore, Bosley, Conway, Young, Honowitz, Florida, Behringer, Schmidt, French, Boyd, Williamson, Ogilvy, Troop, Flowers, Davis, and Carter. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the comptroller to issue various requests for a proposal to secure bond counsel, financial advisors, underwriters, underwriters' counsel, and other professional services necessary to prepare documents required to issue the bonds containing a severability clause. That's the extent of our second readings.
With dispens for line item 14, perfection consent count.
Board Bill 149, sponsored by Alderman Davis and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from D Multiple Family Dwelling District and F Neighborhood Commercial District to the F Neighborhood Commercial District only in City Block 4971 containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 150, sponsored by Alderman Davis and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from C Multiple Family Dwelling District to the F Neighborhood Commercial District in City Block 5445 containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 142, sponsored by Alderman Davis and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2900 through 38, 3000 through 3036 Washington 509 Reverend T. E. Huntley, and 2927 through 35 Locusts containing a severability clause. Board Bill 127, sponsored by Alderman Young and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 1116 Olive containing a severability clause. Board Bill 132, sponsored by Alderman Young and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 500 North Broadway containing a severability clause. Board Bill 166, sponsored by Alderman Young and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing the city to enter into a development agreement with Ralph Corp Holdings, authorizing the city to issue its taxable industrial development revenue bond series 2001 in a principal amount not to exceed $20 million for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of acquiring certain equipment for an industrial development project. Board Bill 178, sponsored by Alderman Young and Alderman Wessels and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment pertaining to the real property located at 501 North Broadway containing an earnings and payroll tax reimbursement account. Board Bill 151, sponsored by Alderman Boyd and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 5473 through 75 Brown containing a severability clause. Board Bill 153, sponsored by Alderman Triplett and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2215 through 39 Washington containing a severability clause. Board Bill 200, Board Bill 126, sponsored by Alderman Triplett and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 2621 South Compton containing a severability clause. Board Bill 154, sponsored by Alderman Griffin and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for North 25th and Melanthy, North Jefferson containing a severability clause. Board Bill 143, sponsored by Alderman Griffin and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 1219 through 1319 Clinton, 2101 through 90 and 2113 through 21 North 13th Street containing a severability clause. Board Bill 181, sponsored by Alderman Wessels and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing the mayor to submit a 2012 annual plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development as required to apply for funding under the Federal Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership, Emergency Shelter Grants, Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Entitlement Programs containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 125, sponsored by Alderman Flowers and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 4500 through 78 North Broadway containing a severability clause. Board Bill 128, sponsored by Alderman Ortman and Alderman Schmidt and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for 3454 Iowa containing a severability clause. Board Bill 145, sponsored by Alderman Ortman and ordinance- Board Bill one forty-five, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for twenty-six twenty-one through twenty-three McNair, containing a severability clause. Board Bill one twenty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for forty-one twenty-six Botanical, containing a severability clause. Board Bill one forty-four, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-six sixty-five Shenandoah, containing a severability clause. Board Bill one thirty, sponsored by Alderman Woman Florida, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-eight fifty-one through fifty-three North Utah, containing a severability clause. Board Bill one thirty-one, sponsored by Alderman Carter, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for fifty-seven sixteen Saloma, containing a severability clause. Board Bill one thirty-three, sponsored by Alderwoman Howard, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for Bevo Mills Scattered Sites Three Redevelopment Area, containing a severability clause. Board Bill one thirty-four, sponsored by Alderman Cone, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-nine hundred Ray, containing a severability clause. Board Bill one fifty-two, sponsored by Alderman Valmer, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for fifty-two twenty-seven through thirty-nine North River Area, containing a severability clause. Board Bill one sixty-five, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for forty-two oh-seven Arco, containing a severability clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
All of them from the thirteenth. You recognize on the motion for the perfection consent count.
Members of the board, I move for perfection of the aforementioned bills on the consent calendar.
Move by all of them from the thirteenth. Second of all, all of them from the twenty-seventh. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by a percent. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill one eighty-six, Committee Substitute As Amended, sponsored by Aldermen and Alderwomen. Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Troop, Honowitz, Wessels, Cone, Boyd, Triplet, Griffin, Ogilvy, Schmidt, Florida, Howard, Carter, Ortman, Kennedy, Conway, Bosley, Rhodey, Williamson, Moore, French, Flowers, Young, Vacaro, Valmer, and President Reed. An ordinance pertaining to the purchase or resale of scrap metal, repealing ordinance five-five-seven-eight-three, and repealing ordinance six-seven-four-two-four pertaining to electronic database requirements, sale and purchase of certain scrap metal, and rules and regulations for persons doing business in the city as scrap metal, scrap metal dealers, containing definitions, a penalty call clause, a severability clause, and an effective date.
Madam Clerk, please make note that's Board Bill eighty-six, Committee Substitute As Amended, not one eighty-six.
So noted.
All of them from the sixteenth. You recognize on perfection of Board Bill eighty-six, Committee Substitute As Amended.
I move to perfect Board Bill eighty-six, Committee Substitute As Amended.
Move by all of them from the sixteenth. Second of all, all of them from the ninth. Please proceed, all of them.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. This is known as the scrap metal legislation, and I just want to thank all those who have had a part in it, because it was not easy legislation. I want to thank the police who came to me and asked me to help them with the problem in the city of Saint Louis, which was the copper thefts. I would like to thank the scrap metal dealers that met this summer and were able to bring to the table things that they thought would help as well on this legislation. I'd like to thank all the cosponsors here at the Board of Aldermen who have been supportive and have also offered ideas that helped this legislation. As you can see, it was as amended, so we've done a lot. But I would also like to make sure I thank the Business License Collector's Office, because they were very helpful at the very last minute to make one of the very last changes in this bill. But the citizens of the city of Saint Louis, I have to say thank you, and I'm glad we're able to help you now, because they have continually, for the last three months, nonstop in emailing me with, "Help us with the theft." So what this scrap metal legislation basically does, it addresses, unfortunately, a problem we're having, not only in the city of Saint Louis, but in our region. And that problem is, we have an industry of stealing copper catalytic converters for two reasons. Our economy is difficult, many people are out of work, and unfortunately, we have a heroin drug problem in the region. So this is not just a city of Saint Louis issue, this is a regional problem. I encourage everyone to take this legislation and look at it and let everyone know about it, and it has been reviewed by other areas. But what it says is that we no longer will give cash for copper. You will be getting a check. And through the License Collector's Office, we'll have a copper peddler's license. You will first go to the police, they will do a background check. The police will make sure that you have not had any violations, then you will receive your peddler's license, and then they will issue you a check for your copper. It also requires that the industry become technologically up to date, and that will help the police, because they will be able to go online and see the records, which means that they can get out within seconds if there is a problem via a database and technology out to anyone in the area, the police, any enforcement, caught pictures of the car, the people who was there. So this helps with the scrap metal industry as well as ourselves. We also address catalytic converters. You cannot sell them to scrap metal dealers, but you can sell them to car repair places. I want to say, and the hours of retail operation were also important. What we found, and this came from the scrap metal industry, is that the hours of operation are key. They're allowed to open anytime after six AM but close before seven PM, and that's because the legitimate scrap dealers were fine with doing business in those timeframes. Unfortunately, those who take in copper that has been stolen were doing it after those hours. So retail operations were changed as well, which will assist us in keeping track of where the sales of the copper is happening. So this scrap metal legislation is addressing an issue that's affecting our citizens. I'm very happy to say we are able to move this through to assist the citizens of the city of Saint Louis. I renew my motion.
Thank you. Any further comments, any further discussion? All of them from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, I also want to thank the Alderwoman from the sixteenth. I think she put, she put in a lot of time and effort on this bill, along with the other Aldermen and the scrap dealers. You know, it's not a perfect bill, it's not a perfect bill, but you know, it's a start. And, and I think with everyone working together, I, I think we can make it all work. But again, I know the Alderwoman put a lot of time and effort in it, along with the Police Department, members of the board, and the Scrap Dealers Association. So I want to thank her personally for her time, and I think she did a wonderful job.
All right, thank you. All of them from the twelfth. You're looking good, by the way. You're looking good. All of them from the twentieth.
Mr. President, members of the board, thank you. First of all, I know that some people in the business, in the scrap yards and so forth, thought that, that we were going after them, and of course, that wasn't the case, and at the, at the end, everybody was working together, so my hands off to them. A large part of this, frankly, is a recycling process. It's about reducing, reusing, and recycling, and they're an important piece of that. However, there has been, as the Alderwoman from the sixteenth mentioned, some abuses of that, more than some abuses, lots of abuses of that, and it's become pretty epidemic because of some of the, the drug issues. I, I wanted to talk about some of these cases only because I know all of us have felt that pain that constituents have expressed to us, and sometimes I get the sense that some people may think that this is only about property damage, and it extends well beyond that. It has destroyed people's lives, people's livelihood, and so forth. So I'll give a few brief situations, if you'll allow me, please. One situation that was emailed, I don't know how many people got this email, but it was about a young couple in the city of Saint Louis who had their child in daycare. They got the phone call that the air conditioning components were stolen as a result of trying to get the copper, and so they, they had to try to find some place for their daughter to be. They lost periods of time at work. Also, obviously, everybody feels concerned when, when they know that all of these things are being stolen. A church up the street from me had their air conditioning components taken. We meet in that church's basement for our Neighborhood Accountability Board meetings, where we work with youth, lots of neighborhood meetings, not to mention the meetings for the churches and so forth. So a lot of things, particularly this summer, when the, the temperatures reached in the hundreds, it was very difficult. We have buildings currently in the twentieth ward that are not being rehabbed. I've talked to some of the people there, and two or three times, people have come in to take the copper. The copper they didn't get the first time from the downspouts or from the gutters, they got from, from the water pipes, and then went and got the air conditioners and so forth. And so some of the developers currently are not going into some of the buildings, at least I know in my ward, because they cannot afford to go in at this point and do it, and they're waiting for something like this that's being passed to deal with it. And even yesterday, I inquired of somebody whether they were going to close on a building that Freddie Mac has, it's a foreclosure, and, and the problem is that they discovered that much to their chagrin that somebody had stolen the copper pipes, the basement had filled with water, and so now the rehab costs are too extreme for them, and they're not going to close on that property. We can all tell of lots of stories where people have put up their for sale sign. I see that we have a representative of the Realtors Association here today. They put up the for sale sign, somebody closes on that. As they're moving their stuff out and the new person is coming in to take possession of that building, they discover that the air conditioning is gone. Maybe they don't discover it till next summer, but we had the summer, and so they discovered it then, and that somebody has taken their copper piping. This legislation is not perfect, but a lot of things have happened. If you are in the trade, you will get cash for copper if you go to the, to the scrapyard, that, that's electrical and plumbing. The state has a provision that says if you have a pre-existing relationship, you're a licensed business, and you're reasonably expected to generate that copper scrap, that you still can get the cash as well, and the copper peddler provisions are also in there. I know that the Alderwoman from the sixteenth and others are in discussions with people throughout the whole region. Obviously, I would, I, I think we all would have liked to have worked a lot quicker on this, but now the next focus, obviously, is to try to get everybody else in the region to use this as a model for that. This, this is frankly devastating to this whole region.
Thank you, all of them. All of them from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. While I stand here on paper as a supporter of this bill, I think we are putting a Band-Aid on major surgery. There's more to this building than just copper. There are other metals that are being taken from the city of Saint Louis. A crime against the city when you take all the metals out of the buildings, the, the furnaces, the hot water tanks, the windows, so goes the bricks, and you know I talk about bricks all the time? I have eight hundred and forty-five buildings in the fourth ward that are scheduled for demolition because of this metal, because of what they do to these buildings, and then they come along and steal the bricks. Today, I'm being interviewed by a news reporter about the bricks in the city of Saint Louis. Who's going to stop the people with the shopping carts that frequent my area, that come to my neighborhood every day? Twenty and thirty shopping carts? How can you take the, the tags from a shopping cart? These guys have to be stopped, because there, there's brass, there's, any other metals that you can sell, the hot water tanks, and they're just ripping and ripping and ripping with thirty-three hundred empty buildings and thirty-seven hundred lots that we have. I'm going to add that thirty-three hundred empty buildings to the thirty-seven hundred lots, and that should look like the riverfront. You know, it's amazing that we have this bill, and I'm on, I'm in support of it, because we're going to get some help. I've been promised that I would get some help in my community and get more exposure. There is no exposure, and I need help over on that side of town, so that the fourth ward can join the rest of the city of Saint Louis and become a part of this great city that we live in. When you come to my ward and you see those eight hundred and forty-five houses with no signs on them, looking like dollhouses, you wonder where you are, if you're in Haiti or if you're in Japan. This is America, and there is no place else in this community, in this entire United States, that you could steal an ent, an entire building and get away with it, and they have been getting away with it. You only give them a five, fifty dollar fine, and they go away and they never show up. They're taking all our properties down in the Katrina area, and I'm going to talk about this until the problem is solved, or until I'm not in office, and then I'm going to pass it on to the next Alderman of the fourth ward, because we have nothing but land. So if anybody want to develop, I have thirty-seven hundred empty lots from buildings being stole, and this month alone, and I record them, twenty-two buildings have been stole this month in the fourth ward. So we need more than this copper bill. We need some attention. We are part of this great city. We pay the same taxes as everyone else, and we need some help over there on that side of town. They stole the third ward, they stole the fifth ward, they stole the twenty-second ward, and they're abolishing the history in the fourth ward, and we need help over there, and especially on these shopping cart bandits who continue to go to the junkyard. We haven't addressed that. Every day, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty guys who can get up in the middle of the night and steal some metal and then take it down to the junkyard, and that needs to stop. But I'm in support of this bill only because they say that they're going to give me some help in my ward. Thank you.
Thank you. All of them from the twenty-seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to thank the sponsor. I think she has done a marvelous job to this bill. I, I think it gives the residents of this city some peace of mind. Will it completely eliminate stealing copper? No, no, not, not at all. You're not going to be able to do that with anything. But what it will do, it will take a chunk out of this portion of crime throughout our city, and also working very closely with the scrap metal dealers was, to me, a great advantage. We'll have an opportunity to send information to them when things are stolen, and also the check piece that you put in there, Alderwoman, was very, very smart as well, instead of giving them cash. Now, I know a lot of scrap metal dealers are dealing cash, but in today's society, we, we have to somehow eliminate this, this thievery. And I must address my colleague. You know, whenever you have a, a situation in your ward, we are Aldermen down here, and we need to create legislation in order to stop or try to stop some of the problems. And I want to work very closely with my colleague to let him know that I'm there to help, but I can't create, because it's not in my community. But I would love to work with him, and I didn't want to tie it into this bill, because keeping the two separate was very important, the brick from the metal. So congratulations, Alderwoman, working with the Police Department, scrap metal dealers, and having, or getting input from your colleagues was a very smart, to me, idea. But Alderman, please, whenever you want to come up with the bill, bring it to my committee. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. All of them from the first.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I, I rise also to congratulate the Alderwoman Behringer for this bill. When, when you look at the bill, and you look at the conditions that the bill addressed, this bill is about thirty years late. This bill should have been passed thirty years ago, had it been passed thirty years ago, much of North Saint Louis would still be standing. So I'd like to ditto the Alderman from the fourth ward indicating that we have scavenger groups operating in North Saint Louis, and it's not just about the air conditioning and the air conditioning, uh, uh, units and the furnace units, it's about, it's not just about furious metals, it's about all kind of metals, any kind of metals, whether you have a stove, the furnace, the air conditioner call, anything of metal is, is being targeted. Now they're targeting the kitchen cabinets, the sinks, and everything else in our community as well. So I'm, I'm very happy that you were persistent. There was a lot of pressure out there against you and opposition, but you did keep the faith, you held steady, and I'd like to compliment you for that. I hope that when we pass this bill, we will again look at what is really, really happening in North Saint Louis and really see if we can get a holistic approach and encompass some of our concerns within the next bill. So I, I'd like to congratulate and thank you. I know you had a lot of pressure on you, but you did hold the course, and, and we stuck with you, and we will do it again. Take care.
All of them from the third.
Uh, Mr. President, members of the board, I also support this bill. It's too little, too late, but the journey of a thousand miles starts with a single step. You got to start someplace. I have more derelict buildings and vacant lots in the third ward than any other ward in the entire city, and there are twenty-eight wards. And the reason why we have all of that is because the police have not helped when you, I have gone personally. I have gone personally and blocked people in stealing bricks, stealing copper, stealing lead, knocking holes in the wall. I got Central High School where my son graduated from high school. They have gone in that building and knocked holes in the wall on all three floors of that place and have managed to be able to pull all of the wire out, set it on fire, burn all of the insulation off of it, and the police and nobody else has caught anything. I have personally blocked them in, called the police, the police come, make them put it back and let them go. It's not important to them, but what they have done, they have devastated wards of North St. Louis by stealing the copper, the lead and the bricks off of these buildings. They go and work all night long and they may get $25 or $30 and they have to split it three ways, but they have done $20,000, $30,000 worth of damage to a building getting that. Perhaps we need to create jobs for them, but the police are going to have to do more than they're doing. This is an outrage, the way they have taken such a small view of what it is that these vandals have done to these beautiful buildings. Up in North St. Louis, in particular, my ward, and I have to tell you about that, we have some of the oldest architecture and buildings in the entire city of St. Louis. We have bricks that are stolen. These bricks bring $0.50 apiece at the junkyard. By the time it gets into a house and every day, if you go down where the railroad tracks are, you'll see flat cars full of North St. Louis bricks leaving here. And by the time they get into these houses someplace else, it's $1.65. That's outrageous. The police are going to have to get involved because Sam can stick up, stay up all night. I can't stay up all night. And that's where they come like a thief in the night and they get out there and they go in these buildings, they steal this metal. I appreciate this bill, it's a good bill, but the problem is we need to start closing these dead gum junkyards down, is where they accept this stuff. And these people then won't have a reason to be going there. But this is a start. It's the first step in a thousand miles and we had to go and do something, but we need to somehow get the police department more involved in it because if Sam and I and Jeffrey Board, who have more derelict buildings than anybody else, went out there with a stick and beat them with that stick like his mama should have done years ago, we'd have assault charges. The police have to become more cognizant of these thefts and they have to become more involved in it. But this is a step in the right direction and I support that.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the 8th.
Good morning again, Mr. President. I always enjoy the Alderman from the 3rd Ward because he really does speak a lot to what we truly feel. And I know that each of our neighborhoods have been plagued by the copper thieves. And every building that's vacant in your ward and in my ward, I can assure you, it only gets worse when they steal the gutters. It increases the water damage on those brick buildings and they get damaged quicker. And the whole shame of the matter is, not all these scrap dealers were bad, but there's always a few bad actors. And you can't tell me that when someone keeps bringing in the same type of compressor part that looks new after doing $1,000 worth of damage to someone's air conditioning compressor, that scrap dealer don't know what's going on. I'm not saying all of them were bad, but there were too many of them that were bad and it encouraged too many people to grab the copper off your compressors, your gutters, break into those basements, rip out those pipes. I mean, it's amazing, I can't even believe it. Half the time, most of these thieves haven't been electrocuted because they cut the pipes in the basement, the water fills up, they cut the electrical... I even had them take into a live electrical circuit box and pull out the wires and the circuit breakers out of something that was live or hot. And the reason they were doing it was because it was quick cash, they were generally vacant buildings, or they knew the homeowner wasn't home or the church wasn't occupied on Tuesday or Wednesday, they'd go for that compressor. You know, it was too easy of cash. It encouraged too many people to do significant damage. And when they turned in that copper pipe that they stole out of a basement and they got $15 for it, that quick cash, in most cases, in every building I've seen in the 8th Ward, they did $3,000 to $20,000 worth of damage for that $15. That's the reality that all of us face. They get $15, you've got a building not only lost all its coppers full of water and now someone won't be able to come along and do it. Or you've got a homeowner that lost their air conditioner because they got about $30 worth of copper and maybe some aluminum off of that compressor unit that would sit outside of your house. I mean, that quick cash encourages these people to do, quote, anonymous crimes for $30, but it costs you $1,500 to $10,000 as a homeowner or as in a church. We had no other choice. When the price of copper gets this high, that's quick cash for them. And the probability of being caught is marginal. They only go to vacant buildings. You know, there's nobody in that building. Or they only go to empty churches, or they only go to empty houses. They don't do it... Well, I've seen even in the paper where they've done it where the people were sleeping inside the house. It's that quick cash, the quick fix, and they also are thinking, nobody's paying attention, it's anonymous. Scrap metal dealers, they know what they were getting. Those bad guys, I'm not saying all of them are bad, it's just like every other problem you have in your neighborhood, it's always a couple of bad apples that ruin it for everybody else. But the other thing is, I mean, within our communities, we have to make sure that the residents know that when they see somebody at a vacant building, they should call the police. Or when they see somebody walking around the church on Tuesday afternoon, they should call the police. Because you know that even if they're up to something they're supposed to be, you don't go in a vacant building unless you got the correct permits to do the work or you're the owner. If you live in the city, you see someone doing that or going into a for-sale house on your block, and we've had a lot of that, when the for-sale sign goes up, these people know that there's nobody in it, call the police if it doesn't look right to you. And we all work together and we get this done. And with respect to bricks, a lot of it is, if those copper gutters were still up there, those bricks wouldn't be so easy to steal. But we have to go after the bricks too. And I mean, there's different ways to do it. I hope that we get it because as this economy gets bad, the inflation comes in, especially all the metal prices, all the commodity prices, there's that inducement. And the only thing I would worry is that the bad guys in the city will take it out to the junkers in the county. And, you know, that'd be a difference. I just hope that they go to the county and steal the copper there and leave us alone. Bye.
Alderman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. So many of my colleagues have talked about all the many problems that we have. And for me, passing legislation is a small remedy. We are a city and we're a government body that should take more responsibility for its infrastructure. We know how many vacant buildings we have. We know the answer to solving the problem. And we know that we need to do planning. We also know that we need to employ people. And if we would become an entrepreneurial entity as well as a government body that passes legislation, we could solve some of our own problems. If we sold our own bricks and employed some people in this community, we could solve a lot of problems. If we made sure that the scrap metal from those vacant buildings was properly removed and sold and came to our coffers, we could do a better job on behalf of our constituents. If we sit down and do some planning and come up with some ways to take some of those people that are sitting in our workhouses and give them an opportunity to be trained to do something worthwhile when they come out, then we again would be doing a better job on behalf of our constituency in this city. So passing legislation for me is not always the right answer. This is a start, this will do something, but what I want us to do is to become a collective planning body that makes good decisions and comes up with programming that does good for this city. That's what I want.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 6th, Alderman from the 26th.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. This is a good bill. I know she worked very hard on it, Alderman from the 16th. There's no perfect bill, but at the same time, I understand what she's trying to do in slowing down the theft when it comes to the precious metals that are being stolen, just like Alderman from the 4th Ward stated, even with the bricks. But what I need to know, and I just wanted to kind of yield and ask her a question, if possible, and I know this is a city legislating bill, but if you could, Alderman, could you explain to me?
Alderman, Alderman, Alderman from the 16th, will you yield for questions to Alderman from the 26th?
Yes.
Alderman from the 26th, please proceed.
And I appreciate, you know, all the time that you put into this, but could you explain to us, in the county, how would this affect St. Louis County opposed to the city? So if I'm a thief and I'm taking all the bricks or even the copper metal, can I go to the county and also sell it instead of going to the city? What, you know, if the county doesn't have the restrictions that the city has, could you explain elaborately on that, please?
Correct, Alderman. The reason that it was so important that we get the word out that we were working on this legislation is because we don't want the criminals to just go to Illinois or the county or anywhere else to sell the metals or the copper. So we have encouraged, I have been in contact with St. Louis County Council, Jefferson County, St. Charles County, Illinois, Missouri Municipal League, I have contacted everyone possible and said, here is our legislation, please look to get it passed in your area as well so that we work together as a team. So if they want to sell their copper, we want them to have to go at least 100, 150 miles away from our region. Because this isn't just about the city of St. Louis, this is happening out in the county. So all the residents in this region, in Cardinal Nation, are affected.
So they're kind of guaranteeing you that they're going to try to pass some legislation also in the near future?
Correct. I have been trying to encourage St. Louis County Council to take this bill up. Obviously, depending on where you're located, Illinois, they may have to tweak it, but I have been forwarding it on with the help of the St. Louis Realtors Association, which I very much appreciate.
Okay. And that's basically all I have. I just hope that, you know, the county will buy into it too, the surrounding metropolitan area, you know, just as well as Illinois because it is a good bill. But at the same time, if we don't get the buy-in from St. Louis County and the metropolitan area as a whole, including Illinois, it's going to be tough and we'll probably continue to have the theft because, you know, a lot of the thieves, what they'll do, they'll just go out to the county, go over to Illinois. But I appreciate your hard work on the bill. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 16th, you recognize the close.
Well, I want to make clear that the scrap metal industry was on board with this bill. So they definitely don't want to hurt just the scrap metal dealers in the city. So they are also working and lobbying in the county and the region to get this same legislation passed, which is key, because they don't want to hurt themselves and they are working together as an association. And I have to say, one of my colleagues sent me a little note, and you'll appreciate this. He says, I don't think we'll have people who'll be able to push their stolen grocery carts into the county. So I think you know who wrote that. And it isn't just, and I have to say that within the 16th Ward, our impact was that during the day, during the week, trucks would pull up in the alleys in front of the houses, literally walk up, tear off all the downed copper spots in the middle of the day in front of people. What they also did was they went into where we had multiple apartments. And in March, they went in and they were dressed as repairmen, they opened up all the air conditioning units, they took out all the copper coils, and they got back in their trucks and they left. And no one knew they did it until the first day it became warm. They went to turn on their air conditioners and there was no air conditioning. That was rampant in the 16th Ward. So they did it during the day, in the light, in front of people because they were able to come in and come out. And that's what they're doing in the county. And with that, I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 16th, second by Alderman from the 9th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 86, committee substitute as amended. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Board Bill 177, sponsored by Alderman Young and Alderman Wessels, an ordinance extending the maximum term of real property tax abatement within the enhanced enterprise zone of the city to 15 years and authorizing and directing the taking of other actions as necessary or desirable to carry out and comply with the intent hereof.
Alderman from the 7th, you recognize perfection of Board Bill Number 177.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I move for perfection of Board Bill 177.
I entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the 22nd. Alderman, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. This bill applies to the enhanced enterprise zone. When the state passed the legislation originally, the board decided that we would provide 10 years of abatement despite the fact that the state allows up to 25 years of abatement. There are other mechanisms that we can use if we want to do 25 years of abatement. However, in the economic climate we're in, we would like to, this bill would propose to amend that original ordinance to allow up to 15 years of tax abatement for special situations. The defining thing would be the creation or retention of at least 500 jobs in the city. That would then allow the use of this new amendment. Only by approval of a resolution passed by this Board of Aldermen could this instrument be used. And all this ordinance is doing today is putting in place the opportunity, should we need to bring in 500, a company with 500 new jobs, or should we need it to retain a company that has 500 jobs in the city. And then you, as a Board of Aldermen, would have a right to decide whether or not you wanted to use this tool in order to retain or entice a company into the city. So this is just putting another tool in our toolbox of economic development at a time when we see that there's a great need for jobs in our city. And with that, I would ask for your favorable support.
Any discussion? Alderman from the 24th.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I rise in opposition to Board Bill 177, and I'll explain why. This bill does extend the potential for tax abatement in enhanced enterprise zones from 10 to 15 years. But my issue with the bill is that the last couple of years, we've asked citizens of St. Louis to contribute more in tax dollars. We raised their taxes by instituting the $11 a month refuse fee. And then last year, probably all of us campaigned to retain the earnings tax and by an overwhelming margin, the citizens of St. Louis approved that tax. So it's clear that the citizens are doing their part. They are, they understand that the city, the public schools need revenue to provide the services that they want to see. And they've stepped up to the plate, they're paying that refuse fee, and they, by an overwhelming margin, approved the earnings tax. What this bill does is it will, if we pass this, we're going to have a lot of companies with a lot of employees asking for us to freeze their property taxes at these 2011 or 2012 rates. And right now, we basically have an artificially low valuation because of the recession. So we're going to take, what's going to happen is the wealthiest companies in the city are going to ask for us to freeze their rates at this artificially low level. So in 2025, 15 years down the road, they're going to be paying these 2011 rates. So who does that affect? Primarily, it affects the St. Louis public schools because that's the entity that relies most heavily on property tax revenue. The city and the charter schools. The city funds more than half of, the city provides more than half the revenue for the schools. We provide more than the state, more than the federal government, obviously. And so a child now, you know, a three or four-year-old who's going through public schools or through the charter school is going to be missing this revenue when they're, you know, 15, 16, 17 years old in high school. Now, we have a lot of tax incentives and I think we use them pretty effectively to attract companies and to retain companies, but I'm not sure I see a compelling need to extend a benefit we already have that will only apply to the biggest wealthiest companies when at the same time, we're asking everybody, the poor, the middle class, the wealthy, to pay more taxes already. So why, why does a wealthy company with 500 or more employees get a 15-year tax break when we're taxing our poorest people an additional $11? tax break, when we're taxing our poorest people an additional eleven dollars a month? And I think, you know, if there's a compelling reason why this is necessary, um, I mean, I would be interested in hearing it, I didn't hear that in the committee hearing. Um, and this is one of those situations where, you know, if those students, if those, if, if the parents of those children, or if those students were in this room, uh, wouldn't this be a much more difficult, uh, vote to take, to, to tell those students, look, we're cutting the taxes that are gonna fund your schools, uh, while we're asking your parents to pay more money? Um, so with that, I would, I would urge, uh, my colleagues to vote no on this bill. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twen-, from the twentieth?
Mr. President, members of the board, would the sponsor please yield the questions? Unfortunately, I wasn't at the committee hearing, I'm not on that committee.
Alderman from the seventh, will you yield to the Alderman from the twentieth?
Yes.
Alderman from the twentieth, please proceed.
So the, uh, enhanced enterprise zone, that's a limited area, that doesn't, uh, cover the entire city, it's only so many square miles, or something like that?
Um, there, it's, there's a boundary that's designated, and frankly, I don't have a copy of that boundary.
Right, and, and, and I'm sure that it was at the committee hearing, but it kind of extends, okay.
I think it's primary.
It looks like it goes through the central corridor, sort of in, on the north side, and along the riverfront primarily. So it's not, it's not many of our residential areas, and it's not areas, uh, it covers mostly our industrial areas, and then the center core downtown, going out west, it looks like.
Right, and I think it goes up the North Riverfront some, too.
Okay, and then the enhanced portion of it, I take it that's where you got the five hundred, uh, employee requirement, is that?
That's correct.
Okay, and, um, I mean, obviously, uh, this nation and our region is, uh, in the throes of a, of, many of us feel as if it's a depression, frankly. Um, and even as things improve, as the stock market is going up and all the rest of it, we're having difficulty finding jobs for all of our children as they come out of the schools. I, I just want to make it clear, I stand up frequently down here, uh, in support, obviously, of St. Louis Public Schools and public education, I'm a product of that, my kids go to school in St. Louis Public Schools, and I don't want to take anything away from them. On the other hand, we also have to balance that with trying to get these jobs, and I understand that people are saying that, you know, we have all these rich companies, but if we have all of them, where are they? Because our people need jobs, our people need jobs to put food on the table, and I, and I don't think that every business that comes in should naturally get this out of hand, but it seems to me, particularly since I see the co-sponsor, Alderman Wessels, who's the chair currently of, and has been for a long time of HUDs, he's not, I mean, he's somebody who holds on to that money pretty tightly, and doesn't wanna, you know, he wants to make sure that we're getting the best bang for our buck. It seems to me that those companies, first of all, are gonna have to show that they're in that location, that they're gonna be creating five hundred new jobs, um, that they're doing what it is that we seek to do, that these are areas that are not being developed naturally already, with jobs and creating the things we need, and that, I think frequently, there's a misunderstanding, not among us, because we see this all the time, but when we're talking about tax abatements and all of these things, what's happening is, the schools in the city continue to receive the same amount of money that we're getting now. And if these buildings are gonna be redeveloped, and jobs are gonna be created without any incentive, then shame on us if we give them that incentive. But if they haven't been getting those jobs, and they haven't been developed over extensive periods of time, then shame on us if we're not giving them every kind of, uh, incentive that we possibly can to make that happen, so that we continue to get those monies in, but give the prospect later on down the road of even getting additional monies. We'll get the, we can get the, the one percent earnings tax, we certainly can have people who can live in the city, walk, ride their bikes, or ride the bus, or do whatever, and get to these jobs, so that these empty buildings that we have in the fourth ward and the twentieth ward can be filled by people who have, uh, legitimate, uh, legitimate jobs, and, uh, you know, when these incentives are put in place, they are for urban cores, they aren't for these other places, and so this is where we need these incentives, and we should be looking to put these in place. So I want to make it clear that, uh, this is not a zero-sum game. Voting for this doesn't mean you're taking an education away from a child in St. Louis Public Schools. If we do this wrong, and we give every business in every place fifteen years of tax abatement, then absolutely that's the case. But if we're giving tax abatement in these industrial areas, in a city that for many years had some of these, uh, manufacturing jobs, some of which, many of which have left, and we're not doing something to, um, to get those jobs back, in one of the worst economies in this country, then, um, I think there's something wrong, and I, and, and I'm sure that all of us recognize that that's important, and that it, we have to do both, we have to make sure we're supporting St. Louis Public Schools, but we need to also make sure that we're supporting jobs, because without those jobs, it doesn't matter how much education anybody has, they're not gonna have a job.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the nineteenth?
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. Uh, this is, we must have global viewpoints. Understanding where we go in the next twenty-five years, dealing with a fifteen-year tax abatement, you must look at many things. No one loves the public school system more than I do. I gave up my personal income for three years, to give one hundred percent of my time to the St. Louis Public Schools. I love the St. Louis Public Schools, but I also know that I need jobs for those children's parents who come there, so that now they live in a better environment, and they have a better chance to survive, and also succeed with their educational, uh, initiatives. I also understand that this city is only gonna continue to lose residents if we don't do something about creating opportunities to have new businesses here. And if, I don't know if anybody heard this morning, but we are threatened by the next census, that we will no longer be a metropolitan city if we lose any more residents. So we have got to be smart, we have got to do what needs to be done, and the St. Louis Public Schools and all of us can work as partners, as I do in my ward. If you open a business in my ward, you are going to help a school, whether it's public, private, or other, you are going to help a school, you are going to work with a youth community organization, you are going to support the fabric of that community, and so we can all collectively do that, and make sure that if the school needs a copy, or it gets it, if they need new books for the library, they get it, if the kids need to go to camp, they get it. So there's a not, a lot of ways that we can continue to help St. Louis Public Schools, and also build that base, so that they can have more students there, then they can have more money in the, in the overall budget to provide a better education for those students. So you gotta look at the whole picture, and I'm just happy to see this legislation today. See, this is the kind of legislation that gets smart, and it gets to the core of what we need to do as a city, and get those businesses here. I intend to make sure that if we do anything else, we look at how we can grow this city, and improve the opportunities for everyone, not just a few, but for everyone, and I know that this will help, it will definitely, definitely help. Thank you.
All right, Alderman from the first?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. President, my require, Alderman from the seventh, please.
Uh, Alderman from the seventh, will you yield for questioning to the Alderman from the first?
Yes.
Alderman from the first, please proceed.
Yes, uh, Alderman, what, what is the boundaries of this, uh, enhanced enterprise zone?
It's along the riverfront, it goes down the central corridor, what would have been Millstream Valley in the central corridor, uh, and it goes over to the GM plant on the north side.
Could you repeat that?
A lo-, the corridor runs along the riverfront.
From north to south, from what, north and south boundaries?
And through the Millstream Valley redevelopment area, you know, along Forest Park Parkway and, and there. It also takes in the al-, former GM plant on the north side.
So it goes up through the center corridor?
Um, here's a picture of it, but I don't know how you'll see it from there. As I said, it goes all along the riverfront, and it basically goes through the central corridor, with some of it, um, I think that's the GM facility up in the north.
Okay, and then?
But we've had enhanced, we've had information in here about the enhanced enterprise zone through the years, it hasn't changed.
Okay, so this, when I'm looking at the map, the map indicates that this might be from fifteen to maybe twenty percent of the total city?
It's primarily the industrial areas that have been neglected, or, you know, people have moved out, businesses have left us, and so those corridors are being redeveloped, and that's the reason for putting another tool in the toolbox.
Oh, okay, and now, now, you, they have a ten-year tax abatement currently?
Yes, that's when you, when we pass the resolutions here at the board, providing tax, ten years of tax abatement for people in the enterprise zone, that's what we've been dealing with. What this is doing is saying that if you have a business that will retain five hundred jobs, and that's a key, that's one of the major criterias for doing fifteen years, you're gonna keep five hundred jobs here, or you're gonna bring five hundred new jobs in here? You, this is not going to be candy that somebody can reach in a jar and get, we have to approve it here at the board by resolution, as we have done for many years, for ten years of abatement. But this puts a criteria in place that only if you are keeping or bringing in five hundred new jobs, can you benefit from this fifteen-year, or anything between ten and fifteen, depending on the economic, uh, advice of the SLDC.
Okay, now, we have, we also have some call, the empowerment zone. Does this?
This bill doesn't deal with the empowerment zone, has nothing to do with that. It is not, it's a totally different thing.
I know it's a different thing, but I was wondering about the boundaries.
I have no information about the empowerment zone, I'm not dealing with anything related to that today.
Okay, now.
In fact, I'm not sure.
The, the concern that I have, and the reason I'm, uh, standing on the floor, I have a business on the corner of King's Highway and St. Louis Avenue, and their tax abatement, uh, has expired, and they're a small business, and trying to stay in business, and when I tried to get, and I have a building to try to get them some, uh, uh, an extension on their tax abatement as well, is there any thought of, uh, how we're going to address the needs of the small businesses, who are also, uh, in a dire need of extensions of their tax abatement?
I would have to leave that up to you, Alderman, my bill today is only dealing with businesses that are five hundred or more jobs.
That's what I'm saying, if you say, so if you, if, if the cutoff, or the qualification starts at five hundred jobs?
That's right.
Then that eliminate all of the small businesses, the medium-sized businesses as well, in the city?
The small and medium-sized businesses can benefit for ten years of tax abatement. The assumption is, after ten years, a business would be stable, and therefore able to function on its own, and then, I think that gets back to what Alderman Ogilvy was talking about, is how much tax abatement do we provide for businesses in the city? Yes, we want jobs, and if you have ten years to build your business, the assumption is, by ten years, you're going to be stable, and you're going to be providing jobs, and hopefully, you will be so successful that you will be able to increase. But to get to five hundred jobs for a small business, you wouldn't call them small business any longer.
Yeah, I, you know, I agree with Alderman from the nineteenth ward, and, and the twentieth as well, but it, maybe we, maybe we can, uh, talk about this at a different time. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-fourth?
Thank you, Mr. President, I, I want to just go back, um, to some of the details in the bill, on page two, uh, I just want to make it clear that this isn't necessarily new jobs, these are potentially jobs that are being retained. So a company that already has five hundred-plus jobs in the city, um, you know, and may just be looking at a different building, or looking at buying a building that they have been leasing, for instance, but they already have the jobs in that building, is going to be able to apply for this. So it's not necessarily targeted either directly at new jobs, and it's not targeted at redeveloping, uh, derelict properties either, because buildings in the enhanced enterprise zone do not need to be declared blighted in order to have this tax abatement applied to them. Now, the, the area of the enhanced enterprise zone is a pretty, I think it's probably closer to forty or forty-five percent of the city, almost my entire ward is in an enhanced enterprise zone, so while I could potentially use this incentive, um, I still have some, some serious concerns about it. So my, my main concern is, is if we pass this, you're gonna get companies, once, once we extend this to one company, these things tend to become the norm. You give it, you give it to the first guy, and the second guy wants what the first guy got last year. You can't say, the first guy deserved fifteen, but now we think, you know, you're not as good, so you deserve ten. We're gonna end up giving this to everybody, and when we give it to everybody in the next few years, when we've got these low property value assessments, we're going to be really potentially limiting property tax revenue, you know, into the, the decade beyond this one, into twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven. And these things become extremely difficult to roll back, if we decide that it's not an effective tool, because it becomes a threat that businesses can make. They can say, ten people got this, you know, ten companies got this fifteen-year abatement, and now you're gonna roll it back and say, we can only have ten? I mean, my main question is, the other issue is, some of these companies with five hundred or more people, they are large national or multinational companies, that may just have one arm in St. Louis. Is five additional years of, of property tax abatement really essential for them to be able to continue to operate? Is that what really makes or breaks them, when they may have five hundred employees here, but, you know, five thousand employees throughout the entire, uh, nation? Who, who do, do we, do we suffer more harm from losing that tax revenue than the company gains from having the tax abatement? Why is ten years not sufficient? Ten years has been sufficient up to this point, why suddenly in 2011, when property taxes are already, valuation's already falling, and a lot of these companies will be paying less taxes anyway, why at this point do we need to extend it to fifteen years? That's, especially for jobs that aren't new jobs necessarily, jobs that already exist in the city potentially. So, those are my concerns, um, I hope, uh, I hope my colleagues will take a minute to, uh, consider those before the vote, thank you.
Alderman from the thirteenth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I, uh, stand in support of this bill as a co-sponsor, and a couple of points, um, you know, the reality of situation is that we, in the city of St. Louis, are in a competitive environment, we compete against, uh, with, with St. Louis County and, and the, uh, urban areas beyond St. Louis County, as well as the, some of the areas on the east side. When a, and, when a, when a business, a large business, any business, when a business comes, when their, when their lease, uh, comes up for renewal, they have a decision to make, are they gonna stay in the same building? Are they gonna stay in the same, are they gonna stay in the city? Are they gonna go to the county? Where, where are they gonna move to? Uh, what they do is, is they talk to the county, they talk to the jurisdictions on the east side, and they see, what kind of deal can we get? Now, do these large companies need that money? No. Do they, is it gonna affect their earnings per share, even one cent? No. But, but the, you know, it's a, again, it's a competitive environment, they want it, they're gonna, and if we lose five hundred or a thousand, a company with five hundred or a thousand jobs, you know, you know, it should be shame on us, shame on us for not doing everything we can to retain jobs, to retain the economic base that we have in the city. You know, uh, there's been, I heard that, that we, uh, that we raise taxes on, on people. In the state of Missouri, as I'm sure almost all of you know, we can't raise taxes, local jurisdiction cannot raise taxes unless, uh, it is put to a vote of the people. The only people that can raise taxes in Missouri are the voters. Uh, I also heard that we were cutting the taxes of these I also heard that we were cutting the taxes of these big companies. We can't cut taxes with, we can, we can allow ten or, or more years tax abatement, which of course freezes the taxes over, freezes the tax rate, tax assessment over a period of time. That's what we can do. Companies now can get ten years in this program. All we're asking for is to increase it to five years, to, as the sponsor said, provide another tool that could be used in the future to retain these big, or attract these large-scale companies with these good-paying jobs. Now, I would ask that the sponsor, the Alderman from the twenty-fourth yield the question?
Alderman from the twenty-fourth, will you yield for questions? And Alderman from the thirteenth?
I'll yield.
Alderman from the thirteenth, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Alderman. The, a few months ago, you had a, a, a development bill, some incentives for the Cheshire Inn.
Correct.
Which you sponsored.
Right.
And which the Ways and Means Committee heard and passed, and this board passed. And that, that bill pertained to the area of the, of the Cheshire Inn property, all of it except for the, the hotel, correct?
Correct.
And the hotel is in Richmond Heights, right?
Right.
How many years tax abatement was the hotel provided?
Richmond Heights gave them twenty-five years of tax abatement.
Okay, thank you, I don't have any other questions. The, the point is that Richmond Heights provides twenty-five years tax abatement on the, on the hotel at Cheshire Inn. Now, we don't do, we rarely, rarely provide anything beyond ten or fifteen years tax abatement. But we're competing against municipalities in the county and other areas in this metropolitan area that do provide additional incentives. Sometimes we have to compete, and that's all that this bill is, is aimed at, is to allowing us to compete with other jurisdictions. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President, go Cardinals. If you can pray about them, I can root them. So, root for them. Here we go. I want to go one step further, you know, with the scenario of the business that's leasing. We want them to buy here, we want that commitment, we want them to be the homeowner, you know, the business owner, we don't want that lease. When they're leasing, they're not going to put their dollars for improvements into the building. We want them to stay, we want them to buy it, and then we want them to improve it. If they would go to Richmond Heights or some other area and take those five hundred jobs that they have, that building at that point in time would be empty or half-empty, depending on the situation, and could become a blighted building. So I, I mean, this is definitely positive, we have to do this. Jobs bring tax dollars, jobs bring homeowners, you know, we want people to come in at half jobs, we want them to buy properties in our neighborhood, and so I'm in total support of this bill. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Thanks. Just, just to offer some food for thought, I mean, there's a lot of data that small and medium-sized companies are much better at actually creating jobs than large companies. So what we're doing is, we're creating a bill that benefits solely large and very large companies, but doesn't benefit small companies at all. If we, if we're most interested, if we're most, if, if what the point of this bill is, is to create jobs, some food for thought would be, why don't we offer long tax abatements for companies under, say, a hundred employees, and shorter tax abatements for larger companies? Because we know that small and medium-sized companies generate jobs at a much faster rate than large companies. If we're concerned about the unemployment rate, let's incentivize the little guys, and maybe we'll get more bang for our buck than incentivizing the big guys. And that's all I have to say.
Thank, thank you all. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the seventh, you recognize the close.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to point out that we already have the option under chapter ninety-nine and one hundred to do twenty-five years of abatement, and there is no standard in there regard, that I'm aware of, that regards how many employees a business would have. But, in my tenure here at the board, which you all know has been long, despite the fact that I'm only fifty, we have rarely done twenty-five years of abatement. We have been very stingy with it. But as everybody knows, we are at a critical time and in a difficult economic environment. And so what we're doing by amending the bill right now is to provide another tool, as I've said, for retaining or enticing huge companies that pay a lot of payroll, and that have a lot of employees, and that will shop, go to restaurants, park, and do many things in addition in our city that would create economic value. We are looking for people who are going to provide jobs for the young people who are coming up, because we're seeing in the news also that there are many situations where, where, sorry, people are graduating from college, they have major debt, and they can't find jobs. These are companies that can provide those jobs, and these are companies we want to grow. You know, when you look at St. Louis, and this is a little bit off-topic, but I think we underestimate what we have going on here. If you look at the economic funders in, in our region right now, we are becoming a major financial institution or area. We have Edward Jones, we have Scott Trade, we have A.G. Edwards, Wells Fargo, they change their names so often, you know, we have Stiefel Nicholas, we are becoming a major financial place. What kind of jobs are those industries going to create in the future? They're going to need IT people. Those are the kind of jobs we need to be directing our kids in those public schools to be ready for when they get out of school. I volunteer at a public school. I hope you all do, because it gives you greater insight into what's going on there, and there are some really great things going on in our schools. It also gives you an opportunity to meet the kids. And if we start when they're young, we can make a difference in their lives. There's been lots of news stories lately. If you get a kid and you teach him to read before third grade, and you give him support, they're going to be successful. If you don't, there's no telling whether they can pull out on their own, or whether they're going to make it. So I encourage you all to get involved in public schools. I was a former schoolteacher, I know how important education is. I do not do things that hurt the public schools. I have supported them throughout my tenure here. And all I'm asking today is that we look at what are the jobs of the future, and can we maintain a financial base in our city so that we can provide services to our taxpayers? That's what this bill is doing, is creating a tool. It's not saying that we're going to use it, we have lots of hammers in our toolboxes, we have screwdrivers, we go for a different tool every time we have a different job at our house. That's exactly what this bill is doing. So I will renew my motion.
It's been moved and seconded, that we perfect Board Bill number one seventy-seven. Moved by Alderman from the seventh, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-second. Madam Clark, please call the roll.
Alderman Trup, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Triplet, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnoldwitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmid, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, President Reed, Alderman Triplet, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Cruzen. Twenty-four, I-votes, one no-vote.
My vote is staying the motion of Alderman from the seventh and perfected Board Bill number one seventy-seven.
That's the extent of Board Bills for perfection.
Third reading, well, Alderman from the twenty-seventh, you recognize?
Yeah, I'm moving around here. Thank you, Ms. President. I move to suspend the rules for the purpose of placing the following Board Bills on the third reading consent calendar. Board Bill one forty-nine, one fifty, one twenty-seven, one three-two, one four-two, one five-one, one five-three, one five-four, one six-six, one seven-eight, one eighty-one, one two-five, one two-six, one two-eight, one two-nine, one thirty, one thirty-one, one thirty-three, one thirty-four, one forty-three, one forty-four, one forty-five, one five-two, one six-five. Board Bill eighty-six, committee substitute as amended, Board Bill one seven-seven.
Moved by Alderman from the twenty-seventh, seconded by Alderman from the ninth. Any further discussion? Madam Clark, please call the roll.
Alderman Trup, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Triplet, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnoldwitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderman, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmid, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, President Reed, Alderman Triplet, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Williamson. Twenty-five I-votes.
My vote is staying the motion from Alderman from the twenty-seventh. Madam Clark, please place the aforementioned bills on third reading consent calendar.
So noted.
Third reading consent.
Board Bills one forty-nine, one fifty, one twenty-seven, one thirty-two, one forty-two, one fifty-one, one fifty-three, one fifty-four, one sixty-six, one seventy-eight, one eighty-one, one twenty-five, one twenty-six, one twenty, twenty-eight, one twenty-nine, one thirty, one thirty-one, one thirty-three, one thirty-four, one forty-three, one forty-four, one forty-five, one fifty-two, one sixty-five. Eighty-six, committee substitute as amended, one seventy-seven. Twenty-nine, committee substitute, one seventy-six, and one seventy-nine.
Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on the third reading consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for third reading and final passage of the aforementioned bills on the consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the thirteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twelfth. Any discussion? Madam Clark, please call the roll.
Alderman Trup, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Triplet, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnoldwitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmid, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, President Reed, Alderman Triplet, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Williamson. Twenty-four I-votes.
My vote is staying the motion of Alderman from the thirteenth and third, third read and final pass of aforementioned bills. It was dispense with line item eighteen, report of enrollment.
Board Bills, twenty-nine, committee substitute, one seventy-six, one seventy-nine, forty-nine, one, I'm sorry, one forty-nine, one fifty, one twenty-seven, one thirty-two, one forty-two, one fifty-one, one fifty-three, one fifty-four, one sixty-six, one seventy-eight, one eighty-one, one twenty-five, one twenty-six, one twenty-eight, one twenty-nine, one thirty, one thirty-one, one thirty-three, one thirty-four, one forty-three, one forty-four, one forty-five, one fifty-two, one sixty-five. Eighty-six, committee substitute as amended, and one seventy-seven.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session fix his signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. First reading resolutions. First reading resolutions.
Resolution 242, sponsored by Alderman Conway. The Board of Aldermen pursuant to that, to ordinance 65435, the Health and Human Services Committee does hereby approve the recommendations of the Director for the appropriation of the Animal Protection Facility Restoration Fund Account Funds.
Alderman from the 8th, you recognize on the first reading Resolution Number 242.
Mr. President, would you please send that to the Health Committee?
Been moved by Alderman from the 8th, entertain second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the 15th, all in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please sign the board bill, I mean the resolutions.
So noted. That's the extent of first reading of resolution.
Miss Linus, unfinished business.
We have none.
Alderman from the first, you had?
Yeah, I was, I had some concerns relative to the resolution.
Well, Alderman, I did not recognize you when we were taking a vote on that, for that resolution. Do you have just?
Well, the only other thing I could have done, Mr. President, was stand on the desk.
Okay. All right, but.
I mean, this resolution, I don't think it's properly enforced to begin, plus I don't think it's consistent with the bylaws. And, and when you really look at what the resolution is doing, I don't even think it can be done. This is dealing with a bill that's still in committee or was killed in committee. Now you bring it back in the form of a resolution and voted without even this, any discussion.
The, the resolution.
It's a violation clearly of the rules.
The resolution is just going, going to a committee. I know you cannot introduce a board bill that has failed in the same session, but this is a resolution that's been sent, that's going to committee for, for further discussion.
But if you, if you read the resolution and you see what the resolution is, by passing this resolution, what is directing the committee, what it can or cannot do.
Yeah. Mr. Clerk, can I, can I inquire? Alderman for the first, what, what the, what the clerk just advised us of is that even though the resolution is being sent to committee, if, if the, the function of that resolution is found to be out of order, it will not, the committee will not exercise, you know, the things that are in that resolution that the resolution is advising the committee to do.
Yes, but when you look, when you look at the resolution in conjunction with the bill that was killed in the Public Health Committee, it's just, I don't know how you kill a bill and then rekindle or reintroduce the bill in the form of a resolution when the bill is still under control of the committee. I mean, you could, it hasn't even been brought back up or even considered by the committee. And I don't see how you can pass a resolution directing the committee to do exactly what the bill would have normally done.
Yeah, could you, Mr. Clerk, Mr. Clerk, could you, could you talk to Alderman from the first and talk to him about the process that you're going to go through? Alderman for the, could you talk to the clerk about the process that he, he plans to go through with this? And you are, you are correct that we cannot, that you cannot introduce a bill in the same session that the bill has died in. So if, if this was in the form of a bill, then it's absolutely clear that our rules, this would be in violation of our rules. The clerk is, is monitoring this situation. He's going to be working with it to make sure that we are not in violation of our rules. So I would, I would urge you to have a quick conversation with the, with the clerk.
Yeah, but, okay, I don't want to take up any time on this, but if you, if you read the resolution, what the resolution is doing is ordering the committee to appropriate funds.
Yeah, and that part, that part may be out of order and that will be part of what will be taken up with the clerk and when they look at this thing in front of committee.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Thank you. We're not, this, this issue was, is not up for discussion. We was just clearing out a, 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 a point for the Alderman from the first. Announcements?
Tuesday, Health and Human Services Committee meeting at 9:00 AM in the Kennedy Room. Friday, full board meeting, 10:00 AM in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcements.
Alderman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. We have lots going on in the 19th Ward. I just want to start off with that. But first, I think I should recognize my colleague's birthday on Monday, the Alderman from the 4th Ward. Happy birthday to you. I'd like to share with you that we now have Dooley's Restaurant open on the corner of Grandin, Washington. It's the same good Dooley's hamburgers that used to be downtown for years. So it's been revived and it's now at Grandin, Washington and 19th Ward. We also just had a very successful and exciting run of Issues of Love at the Grandale Theater. And the writer and producer of the play happened to join us today, Joel King, and so I wanted to have him as my guest. Thank you very much. Aside from that, as you know, one of the most exciting places that was renovated almost 30 years ago now is the Fox Theater. And the Fox Theater has been making sure that we had entertainment when no one else thought about us until they realized it was money in the game. But I wanted to recognize that Chris Tucker is going to be here tonight at 8:00 PM at the Fox Theater. I also wanted to say to you that we are providing a Halloween haunted house for our residents at Brantner and Webster. And the owners of the Brantner Apartments have built this haunted house. It's a half a city block long. They're providing food, everything, lots of fun. We'll toast marshmallows. We'll do all kinds of things and have a great time. And hopefully, all of our young people and family members will come out tonight from 7:00 to 10:00 PM. I also wanted to have as a guest today, one of my constituents, Mr. Darryl Oliver. Thank you.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the 28th.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I want to remind all of you that tomorrow in the Central West End at 11:00 in the morning is the kids' costume contest. At 1:00 is the doggy costume contest. And at 8:00 tomorrow night is an adult-only costume contest with prizes up to $1,500 for the winning costume. So thank you. I hope to see you all there tomorrow.
All right, thank you all. Any further, Alderman from the first.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make an announcement. On November the 1st, the 1st Ward will be having a meeting at the Mount Carmel M.B. Church at 1617 North Euclid. The meeting will be dealing with the redistricting of the ward and it will be dealing with the one of five meetings that will occur. This will deal with the population between St. Louis and Martin Luther King and Euclid and Union and any other members who might care to attend. We also, I'd also like to note that Mount Carmel will be celebrating its 100th year anniversary and we're going to be participating and working with them. So we want to get the community ready for that. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the second.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Tomorrow is Community Shred Day. From 10:00 to 2:00 at the corner of Jefferson and Market, which is the Wells Fargo parking lot, you can go and take all your private security shredded, shreddable things in a box. It'll cost you $5 to get it shredded. I believe the money goes toward the back Crime Stoppers, but it's $5 per box. If you have some prescription drugs that you want to get rid of that has passed its expiration date or that you want to get rid of and you're not supposed to flush the items, you can also take it to this location and have them disposed of. If you have some illegal drugs, as I saw on television this morning, that you want to get rid of, you can get rid of those, no questions asked. The DEA will be there to accept those items. So we'll be taking in legal drugs and illegal drugs and any shreddable items that may be legal or illegal as well, just put it in the boxes, $5, on the corner of Jefferson and Market tomorrow from 10:00 to 2:00.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the third, you have a special guest with us today?
Yeah, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to introduce a special guest to me today. We've got Charlie Lunchford over there, who is the area commander in the 3rd Ward, who is the guy I spoke about earlier that catch people dumping, catch people stealing pipes, catch people doing things they should not do. He blocks them in. That's Charlie over there. And then we have Candace Ilserelson, one of my block captains over there, and her very beautiful granddaughter over there is Makaya, right? Okay? And then also have Verniquee Scott, who is one of my new block captains over in the 3rd Ward. I think she's asleep now.
Thank you, Alderman. We also have the committee man from the 22nd Ward here with us. Thank you for showing up. Alderman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Halloween is always a very special time in the 21st Ward. For the fourth year in a row, we are doing our Halloween Safe Zones. So on Halloween night, we have two safe zones in the ward, one for the O'Fallon neighborhood, which is on the 45 and 4400 blocks of Holly and Atholone, and in the Penrose neighborhood, on the 4700 blocks of Penrose, Cassouth, Lee and Bessie Court. These are areas where kids can come, trick or treat in a safe environment. The 6th District Police will provide security. And then also on Saturday at 10:00 AM at the Sanctuary, we will be doing pumpkin carving for kids. So everyone can come on out. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 4th.
President and members of the board, Halloween, the 31st, Monday, the Church of God in Christ is coming to the city of St. Louis for nine days, bringing over 60,000 to 80,000 people, a revenue of over 30 to 40 million dollars. And if you need a spiritual reckoning, a spiritual rebirth, come to the Convention Center for the next nine days, starting October 31st, the Church of God in Christ is coming to St. Louis with our 104th Annual Convocation. It's a spiritual reckoning to get back with God. Also, my birthday is Halloween. So trick or treat.
Any further, any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 13th. Alderman from the 3rd. They're sending me back over to you, Alderman. Everybody's pointing to you right now. Alderman from the 3rd.
Well, as my constituency pops in, I would have a tough time with them in my ward if I don't introduce them. So we've got Ms. Cheryl Lacy, who just came in, and she's having a Halloween party for the children, and that's going to be Sunday at Hyde Park, right next to the fire station.
All right. All right, Alderman from the 19th.
Oh, I was remiss. I should have announced that we actually have true red shrimp available here in the city in honor of the Cardinals. And that's at Jojo's at Grandin I-70 and 8600 Natural Bread, red shrimp in honor of the Cardinals. And I'm going to eat something tonight.
Thank you. Any further announcements? Alderman from the 13th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. There's one other announcement. The young Democrats and the Democratic Central Committee are having a Halloween fundraiser tonight at Maggie O'Brien's. I had planned on going, but my wife has told me that she wants me to go to the World Series game with her. So it reminded me of the last seventh game of the World Series that I attended. I haven't changed much since then, but the Cardinal lineup has. Bill White was at first base. Julian Javier was at second. Dick Groot was at short. Kenny Boyer was at third. Lou Brock was in left. This was his first year with the Cardinals after replacing Stan Musio. Kurt Flood was in center. Mike Shannon was in right. The catcher was Ted, Tim, Tim McCarver. And Bob Gibson pitched the final game of that series against the Yankees and they won 7 to 5. Let's hope for a repeat.
That's a, that's a impressive memory, Alderman, by the way.
About some things. The, I move to excuse the Alderman from the 6th Ward due to necessary absence.
Move by Alderman from the 13th, second by Alderman from the 4th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Alderman from the 13th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to adjourn the meeting until Friday 10:00 AM, November 4th.
Move by Alderman from the 13th, second by Alderman from the 14th. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, we stand adjourned.